So you know, I'm Jim Donchus, the mayor. I wanted to introduce you to a few of the people who are here, who are public officials. Lori Wilshire is the president of the Board of Alderman. Ernie Jettie, your ward Alderman, Ward 5. Paula Johnson on the school board. Mike Peterson is a Ward 5 state representative, as well as a member of the planning board. Bill Doran is a state rep from Ward 5. Paul Patty is on our rail commission. And we have a city employee, Bill Toomey, he's in the engineering department. He's worked there a long, long time. And I think that's all of the... Kathleen, you lives in your ward, works in the mayor's office. So what I usually do is spend a few minutes talking about just different things in the city and really open it up to your questions and your comments, whatever you'd like to ask about. So in the recent couple of years, Nashville has gotten quite a bit of recognition. We were recently recognized by Wallet Hub as the second safest city in the United States. And that is due to a lot of factors. Of course, our police and fire departments do a great job keeping people safe. But also, there are other factors beyond the crime rate. One is just the level of, for example, Nashville, and this is just our citizens, our people, Nashville was out of 182 cities, the second lowest in terms of personal assaults, one person against another. So what does that tell us? That relatively, people are fairly overall well behaved and respect each other. We've been recognized as fourth best-run city in the United States recently. That has to do with comparing the cost per person of the services that we have versus the quality of those services. And I think a lot of people work very hard to make sure that we run an effective, efficient city government. We've tried to save, and have tried, and have successfully saved money in various ways to try to make that possible. For example, we redesigned, and the Board of Alderman adopted, or helped us promote, and then negotiated a new healthcare plan for city employees, a new design of the HMO plan. And over the last couple of years, that has come into nearly all the employee groups. That is saving us $3.9 million a year over what we would have paid were those changes not made. We've done some energy purchases on the market, which, looking out, we bought a couple of years back, we entered contracts for the purchase of electricity at 5.9 cents per kilowatt. Right now, Eversource's rate is 22 cents. So we're saving, we've said a million six, but it's really, we haven't counted everything, so it's probably a couple of million dollars a year at least for that. And in various other ways, we try to save money for you, for the city, for the taxpayers. And we've been recognized as such in this survey. We have two AAA bond ratings. That is very rare for a municipality. I think Concord may have the same, because they're the state capital. But it shows that the finances are very conservatively done. We have a lot of reserves. We're in a very strong situation from a financial point of view. And this gets us a lower interest rate when we need to borrow money. You've seen at various times, we're recognized as among the best places to live in the United States. And I fully agree with that assessment. And I think we're fortunate to be living in the community that we do. Now, some of the things that are coming up now that may affect you directly. One observation complaint we've had over time is that the traffic on West Hollis Street is way too fast. Of course, we know it's very heavy. It's a very wide road, and very straight, and people tend to speed very much. A gentleman was hit by a car, and actually a fatality near Fontaines, I think, a year or so ago. So what we've done, and the Board of Alderman has allocated money to do an entire traffic study of the corridor west of the highway, from the highway to the Hollis line, in order to try to determine how and what traffic measures we could take to calm the traffic. This is a very long stretch of roadway. This would not be an easy or a cheap project, but we don't want a throughway running through your neighborhood to the extent we can avoid it. What kind of things could be recommended? We're still going to put out an RFP to get the consultant. What kind of things could be done? We would want to take your input before really doing anything, but we might have, could roundabouts help? Other communities have shown that. And I know that to some degree, these are unpopular, but there is a town, a city bigger than ours called Carmel in Indiana, that has 100 and some roundabouts. And their traffic accidents are far lower than elsewhere. So at least it's something to think about. I'm not saying that will be the solution. This would not be cheap. Anyway, so that's one thing. Tonight, Lori and I and Ernie are going to go down and meet with a finance committee, and we're going to receive a presentation regarding what's called "community power." With this is, has anybody here heard of this? Mike, he's in the legislature. Community power was authorized by the state legislature. And what it enables is cities and towns to get together and purchase power on behalf of all Eversource customers in their communities, in an effort to save money on electric rates. Now, we know that electric rates have gone up very rapidly. 22 cents is the current rate. So we are in a coalition with a bunch of other cities and towns. Dover, Lebanon, Hanover, Cheshire County, others, Harrisville, others over on the seacoast. In this community power coalition, it's called Community Power, New Hampshire. This has been looked at over a lot of years. We had a local committee kind of evaluating this, but there are very expert professionals that work for the coalition or are going to. We have Calpine is a big bank that would handle any financial issues. And another entity would do the energy purchases. And they believe that if they purchase power out of cycle with Eversource, in other words, not the same time as Eversource, through a variety of contracts, as opposed to one big contract, that in the end, they could save money. And that they will be able to buy power cheaper than what Eversource currently does. Now, if you look at your bill, it has a number of components to it. One of those components is the cost of power. You've also got distribution charges and other things. Now, if we could save 2 cents a kilowatt below what Eversource charges, that would save the average homeowner about $100 a year. What their custom now is to go out and purchase power twice a year, once every six months. And they buy power for their entire system. Six months later, they go out and bid again. They go out, they put it out to bid, and they get bids. The approach here would be to do it off-cycle, make smaller contracts, not just one huge contract. You would not notice any difference in terms of the bill or the way it would work in terms of paying, because Eversource is a distribution company, not a power company. They do not create power. All they do is deliver power. So you pay them for distribution. We all pay them for distribution, and you would still do that, and they would still bill you. So you would not see any difference. The only difference you would notice is that the cost of power, you might have a different cost of power than an Eversource customer elsewhere. And the way this would work, and it hasn't been adopted yet, the way this would work is that the community power organization would purchase power for all Eversource customers in Nashville and all of these other 16 other communities. Now, this is something that we've had a committee, a local group of people looking at this. Lori is one of them. Frank Tees, a guy named Adrian George, Larry Lutton, have been working with our energy manager, whose name is Doria Brown, for a couple of years with this. There's been a lot that's gone on in Concord, both in the legislature and at the PUC, just working out the details of how this would work. So this is possible, that this would launch in the next few months. But tonight, the community power coalition is going to come in and make a presentation to the finance committee of the Board of Alderman, so that the board can think about whether they wish to undertake this. If you want to see it, you could see it on TV. So this will be the finance committee, starting at 7:30. One other thing I mentioned, this revaluation. I mean, I know that that has worked a hardship on a lot of people. This is a state-mandated, state-ordered, state-supervised revaluation. If we're up to the city officials, we would not have done this right now, because you could see the trends in the property values. And here's what happened. State law says that property taxes are allocated based upon the values of all of the properties in the city. So that if hypothetically, one property owner owned 10% of the total value, that property owner would pay 10% of the taxes. If one property owner owned 1% of the entire value of the city, all the assessments added together, that person would pay 1% of the taxes. Now, we've seen here and across New Hampshire and across the country, really, the housing shortage has resulted in housing prices escalating very rapidly. We saw, on average, some houses went up more, some less, but on average, 41%. The average house went up since 2018, the last revaluation. The problem is that the commercial properties, for various reasons, COVID and other things, did not go up nearly that much. In fact, our biggest taxpayer, Pheasant Lane Mall, says that their values actually went down during those four years, not up 41%, down. And that's the biggest taxpayer in the city. So pre-revaluation, homes, those of us who owned homes, were paying about 65% of the taxes, because the homes added together represented about 65% of the total value of the city. After the revaluation, that 65% went up closer to 70%. So before, we were paying 65% of the total, now we're paying more. And commercial was paying 35%, but now they're closer to 30. That caused everyone's taxes to go up. Now, we are trying to help those who qualify for the elderly exemption, for example, those who have the most trouble, the most trouble paying for this, by raising the elderly exemption in terms of amount and in terms of income, to try to help those residents. But I get that it's working a hardship on a lot of people, and the higher taxes, are taxes that are already in New Hampshire, very high, now are even more difficult to There is a slight silver lining that our houses are worth a lot more than they were, and maybe we have more equity, but for those of us who tend to stay in the house for a long time, it may help our kids, but how does it help us? So those are some of the things that are going on. There are various things downtown. I mean, we can talk about anything you'd like. There's the whole rail thing that's going on in Concord. They tried to kill the rail project again. Paul's very familiar with all that. But does anybody have questions, concerns? Yes, ma'am?
Property tax.
Yes.
I paid. Mine went up 18.
Oh, I'm sorry, ma'am?
Yes. My property tax went up 18 and 1/2%.
Yes.
The rate of inflation is 8.5.
Correct.
I am not arguing with the evaluation, because I think the evaluation is fair. What I am saying is, I want to know why the rate did not go down. Other years, when we've had an evaluation and the property taxes have gone up, the rate has actually helped with that.
It did? Okay, go ahead.
It did go down somewhat.
Right.
But it did not go down enough. And the rate is also based on what the city spends. And I think we have a number of projects going on, but we have to stop and think that, okay, all these projects are probably worthwhile, but the property tax, this cannot be sustained.
All right. So the rate did go down, but as you pointed out, from 23 to 2321, or whatever it was, to 1807, didn't compensate for everything that occurred. Now, you mentioned that the rate of inflation was 8 and 1/2. The city budget went up 4. So we went up half the rate of inflation. 77% of your tax dollars go to salaries, wages, benefits. These projects that you see are really a very small part of the city budget or the tax rate. And we could talk about the details, but we're really paying wages. And the police officers are getting 3% raise. Teachers paid, before this last contract, $61,000 on average, less than the state average, are getting a 4% raise. Firefighters, 3 and 1/2. And the only way to really achieve serious, serious savings is to cut personnel, I mean, lay people off. Now, in City Hall, because of all this, we did that. Now, it wasn't this year, but the year before, the City Hall budget went down 3%. Not up 3%, went down 3%, because we cut a couple of very high-paying positions, and one or two smaller ones. So we were able to actually reduce the entire City Hall budget. There are various departments there, but we reduced the City Hall budget. So we instituted the change that I mentioned with the healthcare, to save $3.9 million. Now, healthcare still crept up, but not nearly as quickly as it would have. We've done the thing with the electric bill. So we're very conscious of trying to save as much money as we can, but the underlying cause was that the property values for homes went up so much, and the values of the commercial properties did not. So it shifted the burden towards the homes.
But that happens every time I hear this. It's always, well, you know, the commercial properties went down, so the residential houses, people have to pay more. You people also got money from the federal government. Why was that not used to help offset some of the property tax?
Well, first of all, it was not legal to do that.
Okay.
It was not legal to do that. So where is the federal money? I mean, we did it indirectly, to a certain degree. We are getting $16 million of ARPA funds, the main federal benefit. The $10 million, there was a kind of an indirect way to say, we sort of offset some expenses. For example, the school department ran a $1.5 million deficit on the lunches during COVID, because they were giving the lunches away for free. And that was federally required, and probably a good idea, maybe, anyway. But it caused revenue, there was no revenue, so they lost $1.5 million. We replaced that revenue with ARPA funds. So there's $1.5 million. That is a form of tax relief, because otherwise, we would have had to make it up with local dollars. $10 million was allocated to an Affordable Housing Trust Fund, to try to address the issue of the housing crisis. Now, we still have to decide exactly how to utilize that, use that money, but that was the commitment there. I mean, the decision was, we said to the Board of Alderman, the administration, me and the others, we think we should do something that's going to have a significant impact, that will be noticed, that will have long-term effect. And the biggest need, or a large need that came forward, is just the fact that housing is so expensive, and people can't afford to live here. So $10 million was allocated into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. You know, a certain amount, so now we've only got, what, 4 and 1/2 left? Some went to help the fire department with some safety equipment, and there were other details. But that's where we've allocated. Now, this school right here, and I should have mentioned this, you've mentioned the federal money, the school department got money. $16 million is available to do certain school improvements and renovations. It costs $32 million to provide improved HVAC, meaning heating, air conditioning, but more importantly, to change these open concept schools like this one. Main Dunstable and Birch Hill are open concept schools still. And that is not the way to go these days, either educationally or from a safety point of view. So $16 million, half the federal money, half city, is going to be spent, well, right here, to enclose the classrooms and improve all the air circulation. That air circulation is a very expensive thing anywhere. $16 million, again, half federal, half city, is going to go to do the same thing at Birch Hill. So that's where a lot of the federal money is going. The city had $16 million, that's what we got. And 10 is going to the affordable housing, 1 million to the school lunch deficit. That's already happened, but, yes, ma'am. I'll get Paula next, how about that?
That's fine. Just the mayor.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I have a property tax, a couple of questions for you. My husband and I live in a condo.
Yeah.
And our property tax rate went up almost 20%. We don't use several city services, like plowing and trash pickup, and yet, that's not reflected in our rate. So that's one. And my other point I'd like to make is that you, the city, and Alderman knew this was coming. So why did you not support transferring a surplus of almost 7, or a little over $7 million into the tax rate to make it lower?
To the second question, 4 million was allocated to offset the taxes. 3 million was used to purchase city equipment. So had we not done that, there would be no new police cruisers, there would be no plow trucks, there'd be no garbage trucks. And an analysis of what would have happened if we just didn't buy this equipment, which was all scheduled for purchase, was not a pretty picture. The police department saying, we can't get by without these cruisers. But the first part of your question was the condos. So, I mean, we don't have discretion here. State law says we have to allocate taxes based upon the assessed value of the condos. And yes, the condos went up even more than the single-family homes.
But now they're going down.
And if they go down enough, so the values were set as of April 1, and since then, values have gone, went up, and now are coming down. But you may not be down to what it was on April 1, even today, because there was a spike, and then now it's coming down, but it may not be below April 1, which is the assessment date. If we can see that values have gone down significantly enough, that if we did another revaluation, and this time, we could do something called, a little less intensive, a so-called statistical revaluation, if we thought it would actually affect shifting the burden back towards commercial, based on the values we're seeing, we would do that. I mean, if we're up to me and maybe the Alderman, we would set a different rate for residences than for businesses. I mean, they do that in other states, sometimes, some other states. But we don't have that option. We are told what to do by state law and by the state DRA, Department of Revenue Administration. And they're in there supervising every step of the way. When we do a revaluation, you do, what, a USEPAP, I think it's called, or something? It's a report this thick. It's done by the revaluation firm. It's submitted to the state, to the DRA, Department of Revenue Administration, and they have to approve the whole thing. So we don't have a lot of discretion. I mean, we do have control over spending, as already been pointed out, but I'm just saying, we spend money on wages and benefits principally, and the people are not overpaid. A teacher makes now maybe a little more than $61,000, but...
But they don't work a full year.
Well, true, but Nashville teachers, but they work a lot of overtime during the year, for which they do not get paid. Other employees, they grade papers on the weekends. There's a woman lives near me, if you go to Riverwalk, she grades papers on Saturday morning. She doesn't get paid for that. But most importantly, look at the market. Nashville teachers, at $61,000, it is less than the state average. So it's less than the average of Amherst and Tamworth and Concord and all of the other communities put together. We were paying less than the state average. And we're losing teachers. So they get trained, and they get seasoned, and they really become quite good, then they go to Amherst, then they go to Hollis, because they make $10,000 raise. So we tried through a contract, yes, a 4% raise, but tried to offset some of this, so that we wouldn't lose these teachers.
But when we had, during COVID, when the schools were locked down, those teachers weren't working all those hours.
I'm not sure that that's correct. The COVID thing was hell for the teachers. They still taught the classes. I mean, maybe you're skeptical, but at least my point of view. The teachers were working very hard. They had to try to teach these kids over the internet. Here's one of our students. Was that a big picnic for everyone? Everybody's on a big holiday?
No.
Teachers, were they teaching you during that time?
Absolutely. It was even harder to get students involved and to keep students learning. So teachers had to do arguably more work over COVID.
But let's go to Paula.
Thank you. You kind of jumped in here. Thank you, Mayor, for holding this. It's nice that we're back at town hall meetings again, you know?
Thank you for coming.
Oh, my pleasure, and I wouldn't miss this for the world. A couple of things I want to touch on. West Hollis Street.
Yes.
We know it's a Speedway, and people are still running the red light, where I complained about that before COVID. And when the charter school... And when the charter school was allowed to put that additional classroom, I asked that a light please be put there because you got the charter school trying to come out and you got the business in the morning and in the evening. And, and nobody listened, and Alderman Jettie was there that night when I kind of begged for this. They can't get out. And we've had accidents there before, and I think, you know, you're going to do this great big traffic study. But in the interim, what would it be that the school just pressed the button in the morning and in the evening when the kids came in and left? So you can just let the flow of traffic coming out of there, it would make it a lot safer. That's number one. With the energy, I have direct energy, I got 15 cents a kilowatt hour for my supplier. You know, I, I know about energy. And so if you go into this co-op, does that mean I have to give up direct energy?
No, no.
Oh, okay.
Anybody who is, if this community power thing goes forward, only Eversource customers would be part of it. And, and anyone can opt out at any time. So, but if you're already with someone else, that would stay in place. You, you could still opt out, just like you can now and go to what's your, what your
Direct energy.
Yeah, you could still say, I want to go with direct energy, make a deal with them and you're out.
Oh, good, because
Or, or you could even say, I want to stay with Eversource. You could do that too.
Well, who would want to stay with them for 22 cents a kilowatt hour?
That's a question.
And, you know, I've complained to the PUC and it's like deaf ears. My other issue is, I don't get a chance to go to your meetings anymore because I'm tied up a lot, you know, with the Board of Ed and, you know, a lot of great decisions that we're making here. We have a great, I believe, superintendent that came on board and I think we're going to make some progress here in the school system. He, he's willing to listen and that's really the important thing, transparency and listening. The tannery. When I, Alderman Wiltshire will contest to this, when I was on the board with her, they, we tried to get a cleanup back then. The issue was, the 11th hour issue here, EPA was coming in to clean, DHS was coming in to clean. We had the whole thing was going to get cleaned up. But the biggest issue, that the owner on the 11th hour, we can clean this whole thing up and he can come in and take back that property. And then we cleaned it up and it's still his property. I have a couple of concerns here. Number one is there going to be a clad tight agreement that if the feds come in, the state comes in, and we have as a private company that's coming in, that the owner cannot take back that property once it's cleaned up on that 11th hour. You know, it was 12:00, 12:01 that he could come in because the property wasn't legally ours. And it has to be turned over because the property still would be theirs. But my biggest concern is, again, we're listening to people talk about that we can't afford our taxes. Taxes have gone up so high, we're going to loan $2 million. That's $2 million of our money. It's a private partnership, I guess, it's a private company coming in. We got the feds, we got the state coming in and cleaning up. Why do we have to put our money in a $2 million loan? That's not right. We put too much money out here, we got, people have to understand what bonding is, it's a loan, it has to be repaid. We got the new school coming on, we got the Performing Arts Center, you have some other things you want to do. You know what? Give us a break so when November comes this year, we don't see it going up 2%, 3%, 4% anymore. I'm in that senior citizen class, 69 years old. I can't afford this anymore and you're going to start driving out all us seniors because some of us don't qualify for the exempt. And yet the Board of Alderman won't be kind enough to say another $250 a year for the veterans. Because my husband's a veteran, we don't qualify for that. But that $250 to make a $700 tax exempt as a veteran, that would help us a little bit more. And I think that's an honor to give the veterans of this city. Thank you.
All right, now, first of all, you know where most of the money goes? The school department.
Hey, not my problem, not my fault. I don't vote for all of that, I'm usually the may vote.
Yeah, well, I didn't see you vote for a lot of cuts, but that's where most of the money goes.
I did not vote for the budget, Mayor, so there you go.
All right, all right, well, maybe we could save a little bit there. But on Mohawk. So this, I don't know, people, I don't know how long people, everyone has lived here, but Mohawk was a massive problem. I, you know, it was, it stunk to high heaven. You could smell it all over Little Florida, up, up Broad Street, the North End, it was horrible. People couldn't even go outside if you lived in Little Florida in the summertime. Finally, they closed in 1984. But they left behind these, these lagoons of sludge, which were tannery waste, hides, all this other stuff, some metals. And they've been in these lagoons for the last 39 years, since the tannery closed in 1984. Now, what the EPA tells us is that you could, you can put this on the super fund list. You can do that, it would qualify. But because the sludge is not migrating, because it's not moving or moving towards the river, you'll be on the, you'll be on, and this is the EPA talking, you'll be on this, you'll be on the super fund list, but you're never going to get funded. Because there's so many different projects ahead of you. Being at the bottom of the super fund list is guaranteed that nothing will ever happen. But, and this was during the Trump administration, the EPA administrator at the time was very interested in public-private partnerships. And he said, he, the administrator, through his staff, the, the EPA secretary, through his staff, what we will do is if you, if we can find a developer to develop the property, we will design and help pay for a cleanup. In their case, a consolidation of everything in one place, a wall to be built around it, an impermeable, an impermeable surface over the top. A solution that they've used elsewhere. We will not, we, the EPA will not pay for the cleanup by ourselves, but there has to be this joint deal. And the city has to participate to some degree. So what the, what's proposed is that over time, you know, they would come in and they would do the cleanup. Yes, the city would have to, through the, actually, it's not, it's the housing authority, actually, it's not. But the $2 million would have to come from a city source, which would get paid back. But the, but the developer would put in, but the EPA would put in 6 million, the developer 3.8. And the EPA has given us a letter, which we consider to be very important, that if the cost goes over, they will cover it. And ultimately, it is proposed that 500 and some units be built there. I think 230 apartments and 300 and some condos, 316 or something like that. 20% of the apartments would be affordable. They will make a $2.3 million contribution to the Affordable Trust Fund, the developer will. They'll pay for the offsite improvements, a parking, or stoplight and stuff out on the Broad Street Parkway. And in the end, I mean, I think conservatively, this will pay $2 million a year in taxes when the buildout is complete. That might take a while. So the payback is very, you know, is very significant. And that's, that's the question that the Board of Alderman has to consider. I mean, is it perfect? You know, if I were saying I could just pull out, you know, no, you know, I'd prefer that the city not have to put in anything. I'd prefer, you know, I'd prefer a lot of things. But this has been negotiated, I mean, over years, back and forth, back and forth, back and forth. I think it's the best deal we're going to get. And the decision that the Board of Alderman and the community has to make, do we, is it worth it? Or do we just want to walk away? Which we still can, I mean, we're not committed to this till the Board of Alderman, there's all kinds of legislation that has to be adopted. The, the issue of the money, the rezoning, this, that, every agreements, you know, everything, many things have to be adopted. If the judgment were it's not worth it, I think the end result would be, you know, another 40 years, just like sitting there. Because the EPA is not going, they made it very, very clear over and over, they're not going to do this deal. They're not going to do a cleanup unless there's a private developer involved. They want a public-private partnership, that's it. So, you know, that's the judgment we have to make. Now, you know, I think to get that cleaned up, to generate a lot of property taxes, the deal's worth it. But I don't even have a vote. The Board of Alderman gets to vote. I mean, I can say what I think, but the mayor doesn't get a vote on this stuff. So, you know, it's up to the community, really. Yes, ma'am.
I have a question on the tannery.
Yeah.
I, I've been reading a few things about it.
Yeah.
The original plan was to have a, a walking bridge
Yes.
across the Nashua River to Mines Falls. That seems to have fallen off on the, on the plan. And also I had a question, is it going to be just one egress into the Parkway? Or will there be several?
Now, the walking bridge, now, so the, the, another aspect of this is that, this is a 40-acre parcel. 10 acres, which has never had a lagoon or anything on it, would be given to the city as open space. And it's, it's pretty nice. And it is right across from Mine Falls. We have not given up the idea of the bridge, so you could, you know, you could, were there a bridge? You could walk from Mine Falls over to this 10-acre parcel of open space. Basically, one way in, but there would be emergency access from, I think, Interveil, you know, a thing that the fire department can break through, but, you know, regular traffic. You see that in a lot of places, you know, in, in Nashua. So there's a, there's emergency access that couldn't be used on a day-to-day basis. So the main access for traffic in and out, just normal traffic, would be the Broad Street Parkway and
Only one.
Only one, and there would be a light there.
It's a lot of, a lot of homes for one
Yes.
ingress and ingress.
Yes, but, you know, the traffic people say it would work, you know, but it would, you know, obviously there would now be a light on the Broad Street Parkway. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for taking my question. The first thing I want to say is to add to what Di said about condos. Manufactured homes are the same situation
They are.
where the trash and the snow removal have their same situation. And I want to point out that Ward 5 has the largest number of them. Which brings up to my property tax valuation and appraisal in Vision issue. Is in November, when I was researching to prepare an abatement, I noticed an appraisal discrepancy between modular homes and single trailers. Modular homes have about 20 to 80% more of square feet and usually have an extra bathroom and bedroom and are built newer. And many, many, many of them were valued at less. And when I did a 91A right-to-no request in November, it got put, I got told January 6. On January 6, I was told January 31. January 31 was yesterday, and on yesterday, I was told March 31, which happens to be the day after abatement due. So I wanted to take advantage of this opportunity to talk to the captain of the ship, what's going on with that.
Well, I mean, I don't have, I don't know about the right-to-no request, so. This is Tim Cummings.
Thank you, if I may, Mr. Mayor. So my name's Tim Cummings, I, I work for the city, I'm actually very familiar with, with your issue. And the issue at hand is your 91A request asks for some specific data that is captured in a report. That report is being done by our consultants and has not been given to us yet. It's still in draft form. And once it gets approved by DRA, it will be then finalized, we will be in receipt of it. And the assessing staff has already said that they will get it to you as soon as they get it. But unfortunately, we don't have it at this time to be able to provide it.
Paula, please. If you're saying that the formula being used by Vision Government Solutions to compute both for modular homes and single trailers, is that like proprietary secret, they're not willing to tell, tell the city who is their customer? How they make that computation?
That's correct, and it hasn't been approved yet by the state regulatory agency, DRA, that actually has the final say on it, to make sure it's actually accurate. So it's still in draft form and they're working through these details.
Thank you.
Mayor.
Ernie.
So, I just wanted to, I just wanted to make sure that you and everyone knew, I think the date, Tim, the, the date for filing for an abatement, isn't it March 1?
The final date.
August 1, thank you.
Yeah, so not, not March 30, 30th or 31st, it's March 1. So anybody who feels that their, that their value is incorrect, has to file for an abatement before March 1. So, and I encourage any, anyone who feels that way to do so. The, you know, the, the valuation is, I think as Tim alluded to, was done by this, you know, Vision group that we hired. But the city didn't do the valuation and the Board of Assessors didn't do the evaluation. So in order for the city or through its Board of Assessors to, to, to alter that valuation, you know, to give you a, if, if your argument is correct and you're entitled to a lower valuation, you have to file for an abatement in order to enable the city to do any, anything to help that. Otherwise, the city can't do anything.
Correct. And we would encourage anyone that has any question to file one just in case. And you can go through the proper process and have it looked at and reviewed. And if there's any doubt, we would encourage you to file that abatement. And as Alderman Jettie said, there is a deadline of, of March 1, so we would ask that you file it timely. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Could the people in the, the assessment office help us file that?
I think they can help you fill it out.
That's what I, okay.
Yeah. Now, it helps to have an appraisal. It helps to have an appraisal.
Well, yes, and I've already done all that and to the lady's point in this one. I know that I had read that everything went up 80% for manufactured homes and condos. We don't even own the land, we only own the building that we live in. And like somebody here said, we don't pay for the, the city to plow us, we don't pay for the city pickup. We have to pay land rent to have all those services. And then another point that I wanted to make was, so I have insurance, it's hard to get insurance on these manufactured or mobile homes, but when you can get it, and we do, they're not going to, they're not going to cover us for what the city is telling us our home is worth because it's a mobile home. So they'll only cover us for X, Y, and Z and not whatever, like mine came in at 234,000. I don't even, I live in a little 800-square-foot mobile home. I lived on a big house on Officer Eggs at 4. I was paying almost $7,000 in taxes over there before I moved two years ago. And now I'm going to be paying over $4,000 for a little 800-square-foot mobile home here.
Well, I think you should file for an abatement. Now, you know, I don't know how much mobile homes are worth these days, but I think you should file for an abatement. And see, you know, but it would help to have an appraisal. I mean, again, we, as you already heard, the DRA is all over this. I mean, you know, and the law says, this is in a city law. We have to assess taxes based upon these values. And if a mobile home is worth 234,000, if it is, that's what the taxes are based on. If you file an abatement and it's 134,000, then you'll pay a lot less. Yes, ma'am, or, sir, sorry.
My name's DM Betancourt, Sixth Grace Drive, and a couple of questions. So I'm one of the homeowners where my rate went up 47%, right? So it was a big kick in the pants.
What, what is your value now, DM?
It's 500 and change, we'll call it 550.
And what was it before?
It was around 300 and some. Okay?
All right.
So my question is, if the state is forcing us to do these things that you say per law, then what can our city officials do to either have some of our legislatures go to the, the state and say, hey, we have an issue here, a burden that the city is taking on, right? How do we get the laws changed? Because we're, we're not experts in that area. So where is the, I'll call it the brain power to say, hey, how do we get to our legislatures to change the law? Or at least allow the city to make adjustments, et cetera? So that's my question, first question. And my second question is, because the commercial property has gone down, what does the city have for plans to draw business into the city to potentially offset some of those decreases? Where, you know, you indicate that we're the second or third, you know, safest city, right, et cetera. You know, Nashua's a great place to live. So what do we do or how do we attract business to increase the revenue? So what do we do or how do we attract business to increase the revenue, right, without increasing our tax rate?
Now, um, the legal change is not easy because, you know, how this happened, I'm not even sure. The fact that we have to do a revaluation periodically is actually in the state constitution now. They've put that in law, but also in the state constitution. I mean, somehow, we voted to put that in the state constitution. When that was on the ballot, I don't know. Probably people didn't even realize what they're voting for, really. But, I mean, I don't remember it, but it's in the state constitution. Now, one thing that could help, if it is constitutional, I don't know that it is. I mean, what I would love is to be able to set different rates for commercial and residential. I mean, instead of 18 for everybody, maybe we'd have 22 and 16 or 15 or something, you know? But, you know, whether that would meet the test of the state constitution, which also is a thing that talks about non-proportional taxes being prohibited, I don't know. That could, if, if that were legal, constitutional, under the New Hampshire Constitution, that would
Could someone look at that to deter?
Well, we, um, I think you're right. I think we should. The, the, that was the first part of your question. The second was, give me that second part.
The second piece was about commercial property.
Yes. Now, commercial didn't, um, didn't, I mean, I gave the example of the Pheasant Lane Mall. They said, they, they say their value went down. I mean, we don't agree with that. But commercial properties didn't necessarily go down, but, you know, the, if they go up 10% and your house goes up 60, you can see how that alters the proportions of payment. So we, uh, are working hard to try to build the tax base. One thing we need to enable businesses to establish themselves here is more housing. I mean, uh, the, the two biggest complaints we get from the businesses, you know, big ones that pay a lot, you know, potentially could pay significant. Number one, we can't find employees. We have all these openings, we can't fill them. And this comes from BAE on down, BAE and Fidelity on down. Number two, um, number two, um, you know, the housing prices are too high. Now, we are working to bring business in. For example, um, and, and this is in the works, and I believe it will happen, but because the, the, the construction is ongoing now, you might remember, um, the Ingersoll Rand property, uh, which the city at one point bought before I was mayor to potentially have a public works facility there. That didn't really, in the end, wasn't going to work for reasons we could talk about. So we sold that to an abutter, who in turn has made a deal with KJ Can, I think is the name, a Malaysian company who, in that site, is going to build a facility that will punch out aluminum cans, a couple billion, and, uh, they, a year, they say. And they will employ a couple, 200, 300 people. And that, the, uh, the factory needs to be, you know, redone to fit their needs. But if you go out there now, you see there's actually work going on. That is something, you know, we wanted and we worked to get. And that will, you know, add to the tax base. We are, we can potentially add, I mean, one place we can add is downtown. I mean, the downtown, um, is a great development opportunity because there's been very little private investment in the downtown for like a century. So we're trying to attract, yeah, you know, particularly housing because we need it and because it will pay more taxes than it will require in services. Like the school street housing will pay 350, 400 in taxes, add to the population downtown, mostly small units, uh, you know, add customers, help to, that build the value of the, the businesses downtown. So we're very conscious of trying to increase tax revenues. And Tim Cummings, who's been the Economic Development Director, I mean, I, I, we must talk every day about these things, you know? We could talk about some of the details of things we're trying to make happen, but we're very conscious of trying to expand the tax base and bring in as much as we possibly But we've got some limitations. They can't find employees and housing costs. And those two are related, you know? Getting rail in would help us build business. And the city is so far, you know, we're so behind this, we've been, you know, fighting for this and fighting for this and fighting for this. And our executive counselor, who comes from Milford, David Wheeler, about two weeks ago, week, two weeks ago, voted three to two to stop the project. Now, that could bring in a lot of development, you know, tons of jobs, it would grow the tax base. I mean, it's just so obvious. I go to a U.S. Conference of Mayor meeting, couple, you know, all over the country, they're promoting rail. Bipartisan, you know, Idaho and Utah, they're working on a north-south line, Texas, Virginia, Illinois. I mean, they're all working on projects. Try, because as they say, we had the head of the FRA, Federal Rail Administration, and Amtrak, unprecedented amounts of money to do rail projects from the federal government right now. And yet, our executive counsel, three guys, and they are, the, they are all guys, the three that voted no, voted to kill it. And so now, we got to try to rescue this thing locally. I, um, you know, it's, it's very discouraging.
What's the projected ridership?
The, the state DOT, so what they killed is a, a, the final planning phase, which, it's not paid for even by state money. It's all federal. So they stopped it before the thing was done. But they got well into, and that's another waste. I mean, they're 90% through, and now we're going to just throw all that money away? So, um, uh, but DOT, the state DOT was deeply into it. They say it would have sufficient ridership to operate on a break-even basis or better.
And what about the maintenance of the, of the track?
Including the maintenance of it. Now, there would need to be a capital expenditure to improve the track.
But, Mayor, I just want to interject.
But, but that would be at least half federal, and there would be a requirement, yes, that the state put some money into track construction. But once the track was improved, the track is already there, but once the track were upgraded, um, the cost, the, the state DOT is saying that they think the fares would cover the cost of maintenance and operations.
In fact, when we had money, and Alderman Wills, she would attest to it, Charlie Bass got us money with Bernie Streeter. We had money to do the rail. And because we did not move on it, the money had to go back to the feds. So that, I was on the board from 2002 to 2005, so it was somewhere around 2004, 2005. And I remember we had legislation to accept the money. We had the money, if I remember correctly, maybe I, correct me if I'm wrong, but we had something that had to do with the rail, and we were supposed to be getting money, and we had to send it back because we did not do anything. We can go back and look at the paperwork, but I remember it was under Streeter, that with Charlie Bass was getting us the federal funds. So, um, my memory is pretty good, but if anybody wants to look this up and correct me, that'd be great.
We've got to deal with what we've got now. I mean, I don't know, 20 years ago.
But it does, but we could have had it, but the money went back because
I don't know.
Things didn't happen.
Well, this is what we're dealing with now. All right. Now, we do have to go down to talk about this whole community power thing. We're hoping to save you money there, hopefully, not to fully offset a 60% increase, but something. Does, how about one more question?
Do you see an increase in taxes for next year?
Well, it's hard to tell. It's, we have never had a year when there wasn't a tax increase.
But even with an 18% increase, that's not going to be
But keep in mind that the revaluation did not result in more revenue to the city. We did not get more, we didn't get extra, the city did not realize extra revenue. What happened is it's a redistribution. So a very simple example, just a very simple example, which is hypothetical, but just to make the point, let's say we had two taxpayers and they're each paying 50%. They're each paying, you know, $10,000. After the revaluation, one is now, goes up to 60 and the other goes down to 40. They're still paying the same $10,000, it is, they're still paying the same $20,000 in total. One is paying 12,000, one's paying eight. That's what happened. It does not, you know, even though, you know, I get that this is a big hardship. I get that it's hard to pay this. But it did not result in more money coming to the city. It resulted in a redistribution. Some people pay less. Some people pay, most, you know, homeowners paid more. Some commercial, if a commercial property went up 10%, they're going to pay lower taxes, not higher. So, you know, that's what, that's, that's the actual facts. The true facts, so to speak.
And how much did the actual property tax go up besides the new assessment? So what, how much more did you raise to cover the taxes? Was it 2%, 4%? 4%?
Well, it was all, you know, it's all, once, the revaluation kind of wiped, the, the city budget went up 4%.
Okay, there you go. There's your extra taxes.
City, the city budget went up 4%. But as you said, the inflation is eight. I, you know, so these wages, you know, police, 3%, teachers, yes, four. But, you know, by and large, the wage increases matched inflation before this big spurt.
But wages on the private sector, a lot of people didn't get raises. So you're asking people, okay, Social Security, we got a big raise, but that doesn't offset because for years, you never got the raise. So, you know, it's, it's like this, Mayor. It's like this, you know?
Yes.
They didn't get more and we got less, you know?
Well
An unfortunate thing, but we have to pay out.
All right. Now, before we leave, does anybody from us, Lori, you got anything you want to add?
No, I think you've covered
Ernie? Ernie? You guys, you want
Thank you, everyone for coming.
All right. Anyway, thank you for coming, and we'll try to hold another one soon so you, we can continue the discussion.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right.
Thank you, Mayor.